Mayor and Council, I'd ask you to please refer to page six of your budget draft workbook. Here you'll find a breakdown of each non-department organization funded in the current budget and the funding level of each organization. All funding requests have been forwarded to you in detail. The draft budget allocates funding for all currently funded organizations at a status quo or currently funded rate. I would encourage the council to not make funding decisions tonight, but to wait until all general funded departments have a chance to present their draft budget request. We'll return to a discussion regarding these requests following the following, the full presentation of the general fund. Has everybody found page six okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Shannon, do we have, uh, Ms. McDuffie on yet?
Yes, sir, she is.
Okay, would you unmute Ms. McDuffie? Uh, Kay McDuffie is here, uh, to begin our conversation. She will be presenting on the Annie D. Jones Child Enrichment Fund, and she's requesting a status quo amount is allocated in the current year of $3,000. Ms. McDuffie, go ahead.
Good evening. I am Kay McDuffie, Director of the Annie D. Jones Child Enrichment Fund. I would like to first thank you for supporting this organization for the last three years. The Annie D. Jones Child Enrichment Fund is a nonprofit organization designed to provide financial support for underprivileged children to participate in recreational and cultural activities. Our, our targeted age group is six through eight, and our targeted area is the East Smithfield community. However, we do seek children from beyond this area if enough families in that area cannot be identified. The recreational and cultural activities are provided by SIRAC, Smithfield Parks and Recreation, Morgan's Gymnastics, Artistry in Motion, New Little Theater's Summer Drama Program, Johnston Health Quest and piano music lessons taught by Mary Ann Morgan Warren. Last year was an exceptional year for our organization. Thirty-two children were afforded the opportunity to attend two weeks of full-day summer camp sponsored by SIRAC and Morgan's Gymnastics. Ten children played on the Smithfield Youth Basketball Team, and nine children received private swimming lessons at Johnston Health Quest. These were new experiences for most of the children. This is our, the organization's fifth year, and we continue to be passionate and committed to exposing children to new experiences that hopefully they might choose to pursue in their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDuffie. Does the council have any questions for, for Ms. McDuffie?
Ms. McDuffie?
Yeah.
This is Dave, this is David Stevens, how are you?
Hi, David, how are you?
I'm doing well. I, I just wanted to speak to you, and, you know, I think this is a great thing for Annie Lou, and it, you know, I thought a lot of your family, and always doing.
I, I, I know, and we did your family.
Thank you, and, uh, I'm sure we, uh, and, uh, thank all the councilmen, hope they agree, this is a good thing, and I hope we continue to do this.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Ms. McDuffie, this is Marlin, thanks for coming on tonight.
Hello, Marlin, how are you?
I'm good, I hope you're doing well.
I'm well, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. McDuffie, we appreciate you presenting tonight. Uh, Shannon will be in touch with you as we work through the budget process.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next person to speak will be, uh, Lanell Sebold from the Ava Gardner Museum. This year, uh, they are asking an additional $3,000 of donation. Uh, we, their present funding level is $22,000, and they're asking for $25,000. Lanell, you can proceed at any time.
Well, thank you very much, and hello, everyone. As already noted, I'm Lanell Sebold, and I'm the Director of the Ava Gardner Museum. I just want to thank you first for the opportunity to address the town council regarding our funding request. The Ava Gardner Museum is an integral part of our local economy, and as you all know, we have visitors to the museum that come from all over the country as well as from all around the world. Um, I've told you before that visitors often ask us to recommend places to eat or to shop, or even just asking what else is there to do in town. However, this has been a difficult time for all of us, and obviously, I can't say that we've attracted many visitors to downtown Smithfield in the last couple of months. But what I can tell you is that I have continued working on behalf of the museum throughout this shutdown, and in addition to the regular museum operations, I've also been working on increasing our social media presence. Some of you may have noticed that, on Facebook, or Instagram, or Twitter. And we've also put together a virtual tour of the museum, and have been showing segments of that for our followers. Due to the social media presence, we have continued to receive online orders, so I've been going in and fulfilling and shipping those orders as they come in. I've also completely cleaned and disinfected every area of the museum, so we will be ready, and when we eventually open back up, the museum will be ready for visitors and safe for our docents. And I tell you all of this because the funds that we receive from the town of Smithfield are used to pay, to pay a portion of the museum director's salary. And my salary has continued to be paid, but our income has been drastically reduced during this time. The funding that you provide to the museum will help us to get back on our feet when we do finally open back up, and, and hopefully, we will continue to be able to provide an outstanding attraction for our visitors, and to help the town of Smithfield regain its place as a destination for travelers and locals alike. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lanell. Does the council have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I would ask one question.
Yes?
This is Councilman Travis Scott. Um, what's the, um, the increase in the, uh, contribution? Why did you have to increase it this year?
Um, for the funding?
Yes.
Yes. Um, basically because last year I was given a raise, and since this, uh, goes directly to paying a portion of the salary for the director, uh, just trying to kind of put a little bit towards that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Lanell, thank you very much for presenting tonight and giving us your time.
Thank you for your time.
Again, Shannon will be in touch with you in the future as we work through this process.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Yes. Um, our next organization is Bright Spot Ministries. This is a new request, someone not previously funded or requested funding. Um, they are requesting a thousand dollars. And we have Gail Britton here, um, to explain you, to you, um, the request for Bright Spot Ministries. Ms. Britton, if you're here, go ahead.
I am here, good evening, and thank you for, um, inviting me to share with you this evening. Hope all is well with you guys. Um, Bright Spot Ministries was founded in September of 2011. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, we're located in South Smithfield. Our mission is to do whatever we can on a daily basis to bring light into a dark world, one random act of kindness at a time. And you might wonder what that means and how we do that. Um, in the community, we go to different businesses and organizations, um, and we take a, a goodie basket with some, um, store-bought snacks and some Bright Spot ink pens, and we get that all fancied up and take it just to, to brighten someone's day and thank our local businesses for what they do. We've taken stuff to the police department, fire department, um, the, many of the schools around and, and different places like that. We also take hospice house desserts once a month, uh, to the families there. Uh, we mail care packages on a regular basis, which are also random acts of kindness. We take, um, Bright Spot pins and candy and give it away at local festivals. We usually have booths like at Ham and Yam and, um, different festivals like that. Uh, we do span, uh, sponsor a Random Acts of Kindness Club at Career and Technical Leadership Academy, where we partner with the students there and help them to learn the importance of serving others and doing something to make a difference in the community. We have a blessing box, um, in our backyard, uh, which is where Bright Spot's located, and we fill that daily. Right now, we're having to fill it, um, because there's such a great need in our community. We have block parties, a couple of times a year, where we have, um, sometimes we cater them, sometimes we make hot dogs or get pizza, and we invite all the neighborhood over and just give them free food and have fellowship and music, um, just as a, a random act of kindness to bring some light to a dark world. Um, and the newest outreach to our community is our community garden. Um, and it's very on-time that we have that going on this year. We had the, the vision for that even before we knew of the coronavirus. So, it has been so on-time and so important that we were able to start this because there's going to be even more need, I know, going forward. Because the blessing box is, well, that, that is non-perishable foods and toiletries and that type of thing. Uh, but the, the garden produce is going to be a great blessing to the neighborhood as well. Um, so, that is why we had asked for some funding from the town of Smithfield, and we have started the garden, it is a raised bed garden. We've planted tomatoes, cucumbers, squash, zucchini, peppers, lettuce, onions, watermelons, and some herbs as well. And Bright Spot Ministries did purchase garden soil, plants, and gardening tools, but we would be most appreciative of any help we could receive from the town of Smithfield to help us sustain the community garden.
Thank you, Ms. Britton. Does council have any questions or comments for, uh, Ms. Britton?
So, Mike, Mike, this is Andy.
Yep.
Can you, can you explain a little bit about how the community garden works? How are the vegetables distributed and so forth?
Okay, well, it's our first time doing it, so the plan is, we have a, um, picnic shelter out back with some picnic tables, and we have been talking to the neighbors about that this is their garden, it's our garden altogether, and they're going to be invited to help actually pick the produce, and we're going to put it in, um, some baskets or some crates under the picnic shelter, and we will have signs that say, you know, "Please only take enough for your family." Um, and we'll just go ahead and whoever can come by and help pick and get it in the baskets, we'll have it there available, and probably some bags or something where they can take it with them.
Okay, and, and where is this located?
This is located, um, on Heath Avenue in South Smithfield, and it's actually, um, well, it's, it's, it's in our backyard, basically. Uh, but it is in a neighborhood where, um, everybody knows about Bright Spot Ministries. They come by the blessing box, they come to our, um, you know, neighborhood outreach type things. So, we're already known here in the community, and this is just another way that we can bless them.
Gotcha, okay. Do you operate this out of your home, or is it a separate?
Yes, we do.
Establishment? Okay. And what's that address again?
101 West Heath Avenue. And y'all are welcome to drive by anytime. There's a big Bright Spot Community Garden sign, you can't miss it.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Britton, um, for presenting tonight and giving us your time. Shannon will be in touch with you in the future as we work through this process, let you know, uh, the, your status of your request.
Okay, that sounds wonderful, I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Next, we have Community and Senior Services of Johnston County. We have Neil Davis here tonight. Um, they're requesting a status quo amount of $3,500, um, same amount that is currently budgeted in your current budget. Mr. Davis, are you here?
Good evening, this is Neil Davis, the Executive Director at Community and Senior Services, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be with you folks tonight. And first of all, to thank you for your past support, we appreciate that very much. Uh, here at Community and Senior Services, uh, we provide, uh, services for the aging population on behalf of the county. Hello?
You can proceed, Neil, I'm not sure what that was.
Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, anyway, we, uh, provide programs, uh, designed to help our elderly citizens to continue to live independently in their own homes. Uh, we do that in one of three primary, uh, focus avenues. One is we provide the Community Transportation Program, which you would know as JCATs, uh, to transport folks back and forth to doctor's appointments, or, uh, shopping, or, uh, to senior centers and that type thing. We also manage several apartment complexes, one of which is located in, uh, Smithfield off of Seventh Street. And, um, we, uh, operate several senior centers around the county, one of which is also located in Smithfield, um, there, off of Seventh Street. Uh, we provide home-delivered meals. Uh, in Smithfield, we'll average about sixty to seventy meals every day. Uh, we will, annually, uh, system-wide, we will deliver something around in sixty to sixty-five thousand meals a year. Uh, we provide in-home aid services, uh, we provide caregiver support and respite services. And our senior centers, uh, in addition to providing dining and home-delivered meals, also provide activities for our seniors, uh, that are conducted on-site at each of our locations. Uh, so, the Smithfield site is one that's, uh, been with us a very long time, and, um, I, I dare say, everybody on the council, the mayor, and the town manager have all helped us at some point in time, uh, volunteering to deliver meals, and we certainly appreciate that. Uh, so, um, the amount of funding requests that we've asked for again this year is the same, and just as a, uh, point of measure, uh, that money will purchase something over eight hundred meals for the elderly citizens in the Smithfield community. So, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any comments or questions from the council?
Neil, hi, this is Andy. Um, just one question, if you know, um, you had mentioned that in Smithfield, you probably do sixty or seventy meals per day. Do you know, in general, how many citizens that any one of your programs, um, touch? You know, how many citizens in Smithfield?
Um, that's a good question, Mayor. Um, we, altogether, will serve about two-hundred-and-fifty different citizens, and, and not all of those are Smithfield's, you know, uh, residents. Um, so, I don't have an exact breakdown of how many folks in Smithfield other than the meal count I gave you. Uh, but-
Right.
-Smithfield will represent about a third of our total, um, you know, meals program.
Gotcha, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, appreciate you being here tonight. Um, as you said, I've had the pleasure of assisting with some of your meal deliveries, and I can tell you, they're much needed and much appreciated by the people who participate in that. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your support.
Also, Shannon will be in touch with you as we work through this process.
Thank you.
Our next request is from Downtown Smithfield Development Corporation. Uh, Sarah Edwards is here. I will draw your attention to page seven, um, of your budget draft materials under the DSDC heading. Um, we try to keep them funded at about $150,000 total between their taxes and our donation. There is a mathematical error there, instead of eighty-three zero five, that amount should be nine-seven-zero-five, nine-seven-zero-five, and we've made that adjustment. Um, at this time, DSDC is requesting an additional $20,000 over their current funding levels. Um, Sarah, you, feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you all know, the DSDC has been an economic development partner to the town for about twenty-five years now. Um, and, uh, actually, I'm not, (laugh) it's about thirty-five years, it's been a long day. Um, but I think it's been a beneficial relationship for both parties over that time period as well as the business owners and the Smithi, citizens of Smithfield. Um, since nineteen-eighty-five, um, the DSDC has contributed to twenty million dollars, more than twenty million dollars actually, of private investment in the downtown area. So, for those of you who were in Smithfield at that time, I'm sure you remember the metal canopies that covered most of the buildings, um, which many were vacant, um, and, you know, the power lines that used to run over the streets. Um, so, there have been a lot of changes, um, in that time period. In the last year, um, I am proud to report that we have had more than three-and-a-half million dollars in private investment. We have had fifteen net, or fifteen full-time net jobs created, and additional eight part-time as well. Um, as you all know, the wayfinding signs that the DSDC assisted with and wrote and were awarded, a grain of just less than a hundred thousand dollars has been, um, installed and are a great addition to the town. We would certainly like to do some more in the coming year, um, and have plans to expand that program. Um, we continue to see growth in the number and quality of our restaurants downtown, um, and are seeing people, um, even more so come to Smithfield to enjoy an evening out, um, and to spend time. Um, and a lot of that is directly attributed to some of the financial assistance that we have been able to provide, businesses, um, wishing to locate, um, their business, or, their businesses. Um, the DSDC has also increased our event programming to attract people downtown on a more regular basis, um, and get more heat in our businesses, um, which obviously generates sales for them, sales tax, and encourages repeat businesses. Um, we have had planned to expand on those either, even further this summer. Um, I anticipate with the restrictions on mass gatherings, those will look a little bit different, but with the ideas and, uh, planning that we've already done, we're excited to get back on track with those events and marketing opportunities in the very near future. Um, we have completed five, um, awning replacement projects through our awning grant, and another five design request projects through our partnership with the North Carolina Main Street Center and the University of North Carolina-Greensboro, uh, Main Street Fellows. So, downtown looks a lot better, even in the last couple of years than it has previously. We also have two additional design requests in the works currently. Um, our goals, um, obviously, really quickly, um, most of our businesses are certainly feeling the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, some of them have done a wonderful job at adapting to survive and really pivoting their businesses, um, and doing whatever they can to keep them open. And they have all been very appreciative of the town's efforts, um, to do that. So, the marketing and, um, allowing the businesses, or the restaurants, a parking space out front to make takeout easier, and, um, and things like that. They really have, have appreciated the town's help there. Um, but small business assistance moving forward is going to be one of the DSDC's biggest, um, priorities, um, even more so than normal. So, we're working on ways that we can provide direct assistance to our businesses, um, both financial and technical assistance. So, again, some of our businesses have done a great job identifying additional revenue streams, and others still are not quite there yet, um, maybe because of limitations in the governor's executive order, but also perhaps because of limitations with their website, and just a lack of, um, expertise in some areas. So, we have identified some ways to meet those needs, um, very quickly. Um, like I said, we hope to implement some additional wayfinding signs in the downtown core so that once people are downtown, um, they can be easily directed to our businesses and our assets. Um, and then recruiting businesses, um, that will have a positive impact downtown. Um, we have just a couple of vacancies. Um, buildings as they go vacant tend to fill up very, very quickly. Um, but we do have a couple of vacancies currently that are presenting some opportunities that we have not had, um, in the past for good storefront locations for retail businesses. So, we're working hard to, um, try to match potential, um, tenants with property owners there. Um, and then thanks to the council approving the town transportation and race management plans, we will be moving forward with our master plan update. Um, and that may look a little bit different as a result of the pandemic in terms of public involvement, it may be more online, um, or we may have to get a little bit more creative with it. Um, but we're looking forward to move forward with some of the planning that's already been done, to continue growing the tax base downtown, to continue supporting our small businesses, and, um, making Smithfield the place that people want to live, work, and play. And if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Questions or comments for Sarah?
Sarah, this is John Dunn, how are you doing?
Doing well, how about you?
Good, I just had a quick question. I know with the, uh, postponement of the Ham and Yam, that was probably a hit for this year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but in the year coming forward, I noticed in your application, uh, you thought your tax collections would be around ninety-five thousand dollars, more or less.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, uh, how much is that over what you've got in the years past?
So, the tax rate has remained pretty consistent, with the exception of the motor, motor vehicle tax. Um, so, the taxes that that, that will generate are actually taxes from five years ago, essentially. Um, but the municipal furniture tax should be pretty consistent.
Okay, I didn't know if the reevaluation, um, had a, how big an impact that had on you.
There was some impact, um, but it was not as great as we had anticipated. Um, and then also, there has been a couple of properties come off of the tax rolls, um, because they were purchased by the county, for example, or a nonprofit entity. Um, so, there have been some, some changes there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah?
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Per.
You hear me?
Yes, Ms. Per.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, first, well, first of all, my question is, um, I, I think I may be missing something that I don't know, because I, I don't see the breakdowns that, um, uh, Pro Tim Dunn was talking about. So, I don't see where that at, so I don't know, I don't have that information, or just, I know I normally used to have information, but I can't find it. So, I don't know, um, is it in this packet somewhere?
Um, Councilman, if you'll go to page seven, um, of our draft book, you'll see, one, two, three, four, number five line down is downtown development tax, um, at a proposed budget of one-hundred-and-forty-one-seven-fifty-five. That includes their property tax and their, uh, motor vehicle tax, which you see as forty-six-thousand-six-ninety-five off to the right. And then if you go down five more lines, you see downtown development contribution, which is eighty-three-zero-five, but as I stated earlier, should have been ninety-seven-zero-five. We've made that adjustment.
Dr. Barber?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the information I was referring to was provided in the application packet in a April sixteenth email from Shannon.
Okay, I will look for that, while I ask my question, and I'll go back. Well, I was trying to look for it, and I couldn't find any. I've been looking for, so, so, you know, I get some emails anyway, but I was trying to find it, and I've been digging for a while.
but I was trying to find it and I've been digging for a while, but I couldn't, I thought I would ask the question. But my question is, so, um, uh, we go back to the, the budget thing here, that says that, uh, so, uh, last year you guys asked fifty-five thousand dollars, and I believe that pretty much covered your salary. Is that correct?
No. Um, the, the funding that comes from the town is used for our program expenses. Um, so it allows us to, um, do some of the recruitment programs that we offer, um, some of the facade improvement programs, um, some of our events. Um, certainly not all of them, um, but that's where that, that funding comes from. Um, the salaries and operating expenses of the organization, um, are really paid back through the municipal service district tax.
Okay, then.
That also includes the street state debt service payments and a variety of other things that, that the organization, um, is responsible for.
Then why the increase? I mean, you may have explained it earlier. Maybe I just missed it. But why the significant twenty thousand dollar increase?
In part, um, because of, um, increasing operating expenses, um, that are, are going up, um, but also to expand on our current programs and services. Um, so I mentioned our events, for example. Um, we had planned to roll out some additional events this summer, um, that would bring more people to Smithfield and to our businesses, um, and that sort of thing. Um, small business assistance is going to be a huge part of that, um, in trying to recruit additional businesses, um, but also in, um, trying to better position the businesses that we do have to, um, come through the other side of this pandemic, um, and come through stronger. So, so there are a few different layers of that. Um, we have previously budgeted for, um, the updates to our master plan and some of those, those bigger long-term projects. Um, but in this year's budget, we're looking at, um, really how can we increase the overall economic impact of downtown Smithfield, um, in a way that benefits the town and its citizens. Um, you know, downtowns are, site selectors will tell you downtowns are, are where people come now when they're deciding, you know, do they want to, to create a business in your community or move their business to your community. Um, downtowns show the vibrancy of the community and the overall economic health. Um, and we're very fortunate that we have a, a great downtown in Smithfield, but there is certainly more that can be done. Um, you know, we're working to encourage just as much investment as, as we can, um, on an ongoing basis, but certainly in the next year and on the other side of this pandemic.
Okay. Could you possibly share some events you want to do? Which you have planned?
Um, (laugh) so we have planned for improvements to some of our events. Um, for example.
Well, I don't, you keep saying some. I, I'd like to know what they were or what they are.
Sure. So, we have planned for, um, improvements to events like our Christmas tree lighting. That has, has improved significantly in the last couple of years, but we want to continue that. Um, we have planned for, um, things like speed truck rodeos and, um, events that would be somewhat similar to the wine walk where people are going from business to business. Um, we have discussed the potential for some additional music events. Um, I'm trying to think, some additional outdoor events, um, to embrace, you know, Smithfield's position on the river and what a great asset that is. Um, I'm trying to think. It's been, it's been a bit since we've discussed events in a real way moving forward, um, because it's not clear at this point when we'll be able to have them again. Um.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, uh, my question would be then, um, the seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, versus the forty-three thousand dollars that we gave last year. I know you, now that's fifty-five thousand last year, but you got forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. So, the difference in money, uh, my question is, how did you come up with the additional thirty-two thousand dollars?
So, I, I should probably share some history with you there. The municipal service district, the downtown tax district, was created in the eighties at the request of property owners. Um, and the agreement was that the town would match the funding created, um, by the municipal service district as a contribution to the DSDC. So, that happened until a certain point, and then the town's contribution did not remain at the same level. Um, so going back to, I believe it was fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, um, the DSDC was receiving seventy-five thousand dollars in funding, um, from the town. The MSD was generating, I think about eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, actually maybe even more than that. Um, and that number has decreased, obviously, um, over the last few years and, you know, was the forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars last year. Um, so, in part, the seventy-five thousand dollars represents, um, some of the additional programs that we would like to do and projects we would like to take on. Um, but then again, some of the operating expenses for the organization. Um, we really operate on a pretty lean budget. Um, and there has not been, um, a lot of room in that budget to do anything new for a few years, um, if we wanted to continue doing the other things that we've been doing. Um, so that is, is a piece of it. Um, and there was something else that I just lost. But in the meantime, the, you know, the, the DSDC does take on, um, a lot of the town's sort of traditional events, be it the Independence Celebration or Christmas Tree Lighting, um, the Ham and Yam Festival, obviously. Um, and provides a significant benefit to the quality of life of Smithfield citizens throughout the year.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sure.
With, um, with this, uh, cha- everybody's seeing change in revenues for this, because of this COVID-19. I know you all had to cancel, um, the Ham and Yam or postpone the Ham and Yam. If you, if you end up not having that, that will help you a little bit in your, your budget numbers, won't it?
Um, actually, it won't. The Ham and Yam Festival for us, um, we, we, there is a little bit of profit from the festival, but that goes straight back into the Independence Celebration, um, which, at this point, I'll be quite honest, I think it's going to be up in the air if that can, can go on. Um, based on the plan that the governor laid out last week, um, I believe we may, may be looking at a July tenth date of events really being able to start back. But I'm not sure that, um, an event that large would be able to, to go on as planned, um, then. So, um, there's a little bit of question there. If we are to hold the Independence Celebration, um, we would need to raise about twelve thousand dollars to pay for, you know, the cost of fireworks and the band and, um, some of the other components of that festival, of, of that event. Um, so the Ham and Yam for the DSDC is not a revenue generator, um, in that there are no, there's no revenue that comes back to the organization to use for our programs. Um, all that money is pumped directly back into the community for our independent, independent celebration.
Thanks, Sarah. Any other questions for Sarah? Okay. Appreciate you giving us your time tonight and the information. Do you have anything else you want to say?
I don't think so. Thank you all very much.
All right. Shannon will be in touch with you as we work through this process. Much appreciated. Our next, uh, presenter is Kay Johnson with Harbor Incorporated. Um, they are requesting a status quo amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, Kay, are you here?
I am here, yes.
Thanks for patiently waiting. You go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, um, Council. Again, Kay Johnson with Harbor of Johnston County. Our request is, um, again, twenty-five hundred dollars to be able to provide services for, um, residents of the town of Smithfield. Twenty eighteen, nineteen, we've served over two hundred and fifty residents from the Smithfield area through our, um, sheltering, um, court advocacy, victim advocacy, um, program services that we, um, provide on a now consistent basis. Um, even though our shelter is still not operational, we, when individuals contact us, um, if they are in imminent danger, we do one of two things. Um, first, we contact our sister county, um, to see if they are able to serve that individual. And if they are not, then we are having to secure a hotel stay, um, which comes out of Harbor's budget, um, for the time in which that individual needs. It is our goal to, particularly moving forward, understanding that many of our, um, DV shelters are no longer accepting clients from, new clients, um, as well as clients outside of their community. Then we will be contracting, um, seeking to contract with, um, one of our hotels to be able to lease, um, space for them, from them, um, at least the next three months, um, for non, what we consider to be non-congregate, um, shelter. So, any assistance that the town will be able to provide for Harbor will be greatly appreciated where we understand that, um, there will be an increase in our expenses as we look at, um, other ways of providing sheltering services. Um, before I end, I would like to say that even though we were not able to shelter, um, in our facility, uh, we still served, Harbor still served over twenty-six hundred individuals in eighteen nineteen, which now makes us spurred in the state as it relates to domestic violence. Um, and then we are also partnering with Johnston Health for, um, a sexual assault project in order to serve, um, victims of sexual assault. So, that's a new initiative that we have actually been working on for a year. Uh, we were supposed to have a soft opening, um, in April this month, which is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, but due to COVID-19, that has pushed everything back. Um, but again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present, um, via phone conference tonight, and I will take any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Johnson?
I'd just like to say, I, I, I would just like to say, I appreciate the work that they do. It's badly needed in our time and, uh, you know, we definitely appreciate all that they do for those people who need that help.
Thank you so much. During this time, we have seen an increase in individuals needing our service, uh, services, unfortunately. Um, so we are, we are glad and fortunate enough to be able to serve the citizens of Johnston County.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Shannon will be in touch with you as we work through this process. Your, your time and commitment for Harbor and our community is much appreciated.
Thank you all so much, and have a wonderful evening.
You too. Our next presenter is Renita Barksdale for Johnston County Libraries. Um, I will draw your attention to page eight of your budget draft workbook. The narrative on that carried over from last year should read, um, request for four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we did correct it in the online version, but the council version had already gone out. So, um, their request is for four hundred thousand as opposed to the status quo amount of two hundred and seventy thousand, um, provided last, during the current year. Uh, Renita, are you, you here?
I'm here.
Uh, also, I'll, I'll mention that, uh, they, uh, provided a PowerPoint, a few slides, which was emailed to you, so she will probably be going through those as well. You go ahead, Renita, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Can everyone hear me clearly? Yes. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, you're fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, first off, I want to thank y'all for letting me come and present for our budget. Um, I've been here for about nine months. I've learned a lot about Smithfield, and I, once again, want to thank y'all for the opportunity to present my budget. So, I'm going to go ahead and start talking to you about the library because that's what I'm here for. So, let's talk about the fun fact that happened, um, last year. Well, this library served around a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred people. Um, so that is amazing that we're providing that type of services around the whole community. Um, our main location is the main one, but we also have affiliates. We have Benson, Forough, Kelly, Princeton, and Seminole. With all of us combined, we have a circulation of three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight items. That is truly amazing for this library. And with our county, we have ninety-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six active library cardholders. That is just amazing for this area. But let's hit on Smithfield. In this area alone, we had over two hundred and five thousand, one hundred and forty-seven people walk in this main location, meaning that over fifty-five percent of Smithfield residents are coming into our library every day. So, that means last, and on average, each month, we have six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen residents, Smithfield residents, coming into our library. So, that means we're going to need those fundings to continue those services that your community are desperately needing from us. We also have eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen public computer use sessions coming on in this library. That means your residents are coming in here using our computers for research, job searching, resume building, homework help. We are providing that service. The library is not about getting money. We're about, we're about doing research and helping people get the services that they need. Also, last year, we had nine thousand, two hundred and seventy kids come to library programs. That's not just included summer programs. That's programs throughout the year. We're touching your, your community. We're growing your community. We're empowering your kids to grow and learn and read. So, let's talk about the resources because, of course, there's an increase that I'm asking for. Well, we want to know what the library provides for you. Well, number one, physical collections, books, CDs, DVDs, kits, magazines. These items are not getting cheaper. They're getting higher. So, that means every time we make a purchase, back in the day, a book could have been twenty dollars. But now, a book will cost us good, probably about forty dollars because the book costs thirty. Then we got to get the book jacket. Then we got to get the barcode. All of that costs money, and the library, it's not about making money. We can't make money. So, all of that, that's an expenditure that's costing them. Digital collections, right now, people can't come in the library because of COVID-19. So, guess what? They're using our e-audiobook. They're using our ebook. They're using NT Live. Those things that we have to buy into are, we have temporary library cards now, but they can just virtually use our databases. So, guess what? Those numbers are ticking up, and these databases are not cheap. So, everyone is excited because they're using our free services. Also, computers, faxing, printer services. We don't have an Office Depot here anymore, so people are coming to the library for those resources. They expect those resources. They expect those resources. Those resources cost money, so we need you to buy in so we can continue helping your town of Smithfield residents, because they're coming in looking for that service, and we need to continue providing that services. Also, we have four rooms that are available for free for meetings and events. Now, you can go to the place called The Meeting Space across the street from us. It is expensive to use that room, but you can come to the library and you can use our space for free. So you can learn things. You can have a HOA meeting, or you can have a board meeting. All of those services are free, because, once again, the library is about giving services to the community. I always say it takes the library to raise the community. But however, a library is a reflection of your community, because you need those type of services. A lot of times, people who move into different areas, they look at your library. And so we need to make sure we're providing that five-star services. In order for us to provide that five-star services, we need to make sure that we're able to get the funding to continue giving those services to the community. Now, you see the programs that the library has to offer. I'm not going to read all those to you, because I know all of y'all can read it. But the one thing I do want to tell you about is preschool, pre-K to third grade book club. This is a new program that we provided before COVID-19. This allows the kids to read a book that we're talking about, like, for instance, Magic Treehouse. They can pick any book from Magic Treehouse, come back to the library, talk about it, make friends, and do a craft. This encourages the kids to read and also make friends, because if they're not reading by third grade, guess what? They're not going to be able to catch up really quickly. We got to make sure all our kids are reading on that third grade level, when they're in third grade. So we're providing that type of services so they can grow, so they can be empowered, so they can be able to do what they need to do. And Waggy Tails, that's another program. That allows kids to read to adult, because sometimes they're not confident, or they're not comfortable, or they might struggle in reading. You remember when you were in school and you had to read that first paragraph out loud? And you didn't want the teacher to call on you. I was one of those kids that struggled. I didn't want the teacher to call on me, but they called on me, and I'm like, oh, I got to read. But through Waggy Tails, this gives the kids the confidence to learn these words. They can read out loud and, you know, start learning and being okay to read. Student access, that is another thing that we started with News Academy Charter School and with Johnston County and with the Town of Smithfield Schools. This is being heavily used right now, because kids can't go to school. Without this program, these kids won't be able to get homework help, look at databases, be able to do their research. They're able to get, actually have a library from home. So whenever a kid goes to a school and gets registered for school, their cafeteria number or their SIN ID number is their library card number. And this is a service that we're giving to your residents, so they can still be empowered to continue learning and growing, even though they're at home. Right now, we have over 2,000 students who are using their power number. We have tons of your teachers from Smithfield that are using student access and helping out their students through this program that we have to offer. Right now, with this implementation, our numbers have went up about 28% because of the service that we're providing your student, your town. Your kids are growing, even though they're at home, being homeschooled. They're still growing in knowledge because of the resources that the libraries provide. Also, with NC Cardinal, that's another tie-in, a buy-in that we have to do. We're one of the 38 libraries that's a part of the statewide library of resources. So let's say, for instance, little Sally wanted a Sailor Moon book. I picked Sailor Moon because I love Sailor Moon. And all our books are checked out. Well, guess what? Bonkom has it. So Sally from Smithfield, who came in, who wanted that Sailor Moon book, she's going to get it, because it's coming from Bonkom. So Sally's still happy, because we're still providing a resource that we had to buy into. And let's just look at the numbers. Now, last year, we had a little bump. Well, this year, we had a bump. We didn't realize that the fund balance was pretty much almost depleted, because we were using that fund balance to help with that increase of expenditures. But you know, if you're not putting money into it and you're taking that money out, eventually, you're going to have a goose egg. So we came to you for more money, and we also went to the county for more money. The county gave us a $75,000 increase, so we're thankful for that. So this year, what we're doing, and we're asking for you, because I remember when Mr. Jeff Jennings came in and asked for help, one of the commissioners said, "Well, we gave you what you asked for." So the day I'm asking you, we're asking for $400,000 so we can continue providing those resources that your community is asking for. And we're just going to keep on, because they still want that five-star services. And without that money, we're not going to be able to continue giving technology help, giving those databases, all of those things that they're looking for. So I'm asking you to tie in, to help your residents of the Town of Smithfield. So I just put in a little bit of cute little pictures, so you can see how we like to have fun. We have a mouse craft, a dinosaur day, Pete the Cat. I actually wore cat glasses. Then we also do book signings. We had little Miss Williams wrote a book and did a book signing and read the book to the kids about how to be close friends to different people. We had Rockstar Day. We also had one of the police officers, Mr. Monroe. He used to be a police officer, served in Smithfield and in Selma, and he wrote a book. He came in and gave a book talk. So we're always about building those relationships within the community. So like I said, it takes the library to raise a community. However, also, the library is a reflection of your community. And I want to thank you all for letting me speak, and if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Barksdale. Any questions or comments for Ms. Barksdale?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Barks.
So which towns did you say that the library serves besides Smithfield?
We do Benson, Forough, Selma, and Princeton, and Kinley. And with that tying in with them, the only thing we really do for them, also, we do their cataloging for them, book jackets, little things. But pretty much, all the money that you give us, it stays here in Smithfield. All of that money you give us, that helps with doing all the programs that we do. It helps cover salaries. It helps with outreach, because our goal is to go outside of the community. We want to be in that community. We want to be a face of Smithfield. So that money that you buy into us, that means we'll be able to go out more.
One follow-up question, then. So my question is, how much money does Benson, Forough, Selma, and Kinley contribute to the library?
They have their own budget. Only thing we do for them is catalog. We're not buying, like I said before, we're not giving them any money. We're just giving them services, like helping them catalog. Because some of these libraries only have one or two staff members. So we'll catalog for them. They'll buy their books, and then we'll help out. But all the funds stay here in Smithfield. And the other libraries actually have their own funding through their own community.
So I think what Dr. Barber was asking, yeah, and also, I think what Dr. Barber was asking is, is how much does each of those communities contribute towards the cataloging? Do they pay into the library system for that service?
Absolutely. No, they do not. Those libraries would not be able to afford that system.
So you're asking the Town of Smithfield citizens to fund all the libraries in the county, as well as the...
Well, the only thing that we provide for them is cataloging. So you're not buying into anything.
You're not understanding me. We're still providing the service to other cities in our county, and they're not doing anything but reaping rewards from our taxpayers in this town. Is that what you're, that's what you just said?
Well, with them, with that help, we're getting money from the state as well to provide the service as well. And cataloging is, I'm confused, because we're not buying the books. Your expensive parts are going to be coming from books, those catalogs, those databases. They're not, I guess I'm confused with your question, because...
What's the cost to do that? What's the cost per library?
The cost, I have a cataloger who actually does our cataloging for us. And the cataloging that she does for the other locations, they're nowhere near as how much we catalog for our location. At the most, she might do a row for these other locations. So, and now, I'm actually training the other locations on how to catalog. So we barely even catalog for the other locations.
Just to answer my question, what's the cost?
Well, our cataloger makes around $20,000, $28,000, $29,000 a year. And we have one cataloger.
So can I follow up with a question? The, so my question is then, so really, then, what you're telling me is that really, the library in Smithfield doesn't really serve Benson, Forough, Selma, and Kinley, because all they do is a part-time cataloger. They really don't serve them in any other capacity. Is that what you just said? I was trying to understand.
Well, pretty much. They, we do the cataloging for them, but not a whole lot. And I help them with, like, if they have any questions, dealing with the policy or procedure. They get their funding from their own, their own funding balance person. But pretty much, we're, all our money that you give us stays in Smithfield.
Any other questions?
Yes, can I ask a question? So I know Clayton has their own library, correct?
Correct.
And so they don't, they don't do anything with the Smithfield, Johnston County library, correct?
Correct.
So they're self, they're self-totally funded by Clayton?
Correct.
And they don't get any funds from the county?
None. Like I said, all your money stay in Smithfield.
Let me ask this hard question.
Okay.
This is a what-if question, so just, because it's part of our evaluation.
Okay.
So what if, what if we don't increase our numbers? What happens, what does the library have to cut out? If we, if we keep the status quo of what we did last year, and we don't increase it by $130,000, which is about a, what, 30%, 40% increase, something like that?
Almost 50%.
It's almost 50% increase. So what, what would, what would happen? What is the, I guess my question is, what happens to the Smithfield library if you don't get the extra $130,000 from the Town of Smithfield?
Unfortunately, there will be some types of layoffs.
So staff, is what you're saying?
And no books. Right. Layoff and no books. Because we don't make revenue. We're all about giving resources. So if we don't get this increase, because what's been happening for the last 16 years is there has no been, hasn't been tons of increases. So the previous director has been using her unappropriated ballot to cover that increase in expenditures. Now, we have nothing to grab from. And so also, you look at your expenditures, our power bill is going up, water goes up. And so the money that we do receive from Smithfield, we throwing it back at you to pay for our power bill, our water bill, all of that good stuff. So if we don't get any type of increase, I'm going to have to start laying off, and then there's not going to be any books coming in like your community wants.
Okay, we discussed this before, and I know you've just recently come on board, but in the years past, I understand there's been raises given to your employees, higher raises than what we give our own employees, that has put you in some sort of, well, has contributed to your financial downfall. Is that correct?
Well, I, with me coming in, being new, what I'm looking at is expenditures going up and no increases coming in our revenue. So that means including books and stuff like that. Now, mind you, we're with the county, so the county had some raises, and we follow along with the county. I'm not sure about all of that, because I don't feel confident to answer that question, because I was not here during that time. But I have looked at what expenditures did go up, and we were trying to catch up with that.
And part of those was raises. I do know that. I just don't know how much. So it, and I mean, when I say this, I don't want to be ugly, but it's been poor financial management on the board's part, on your board's part over the last four or five years, has caused this. And now, you're asking us to bail you out? Or you're asking the Town of Smithfield taxpayers? That's how I am perceived. And I'm not saying they're not important, but I don't know that it's really fair for our taxpayers to have to bail, bail you out for your poor financial, and not you in generally, but your organization's poor financial choices.
But do you see there is also a situation where Ms. Martyr asks for more money and no revenue was coming in, because you have more people from the Town of Smithfield coming to use your, our materials, and we had to buy them, because they wanted those types of services, and there was no extra revenue coming into the bill thing?
Okay. Okay. At some point in time, there's got to be, at some point in time, you've got, your organization's got to take some responsibility. And that's where I have a problem.
So how much money...
And that's where I'm going to leave that at.
How much money is the county, how much money is the county going to increase giving to the library? Since the county, it's the county library mostly, and the Town of Smithfield. So the question is, how much increase is the county going to be contributing to help offset your expenses? I know you said that you asked them for $35,000, and they gave it. Well, of course, the county has a lot more money than Town of Smithfield has. They've had rapid growth throughout the county, and Smithfield's finally starting to get on that bandwagon of growth. But we're still barely starting that growth process, whereas other parts of the county have exploded. So the county, Johnston County, has lots of money to spend. Whether they want to spend it or not is a different story. But the question, how much increase have they, are they planning to give to offset some expenses of the increased number that no doubt the county are bringing to the library in Smithfield? I mean, you would hope the county, you have people from the counties coming to the library in Smithfield, because it's the Johnston County library, right? I mean...
Yeah, and Smithfield. So we're asking for, right now, we're asking for $99,000 extra from the town, I mean, from the county. So there'll be, we're asking for $650,000, and we're asking for you $400,000.
Mayor, this is Travis Scott. I'd like to make a few comments.
Go ahead, Travis.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and I truly value the library and the community. And I understand that, you know, you're a little bit in financial difficulty. Your board chairman come before our board several months back and was asking for funds then, and at that time, we asked to refer it to the budget session. But we also told him to prepare for these times. My question is, what have y'all done to stop spending the fund balance? Have you made any changes? And before I, have you made any changes that would allow you to stay within your budget, not spend the reserve funds, or spend any more than you have coming in?
Well, we did a lot of cuts. We did over a $100,000 cut. So we pretty much trimmed a lot of that fat. And we're probably not going to be giving out raises next year. So it's not going to be any raises going on on this side of, on this board over here. So we are cutting and trimming as much as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I would like to make, make sure you understand, is as my fellow council members have said, I wish we were in a group setting where we could talk more, but they've mentioned about the, the coffers of the money. I just want you to understand that the citizens of Smithfield is, uh, money comes to our, and that's what we would be allocating to you, um, which we do with the other nonprofits. Unfortunately, the library is one of the highest, uh, requests. But my point is, um, the citizens of Smithfield also pay county tax. So it's actually the citizens of Smithfield are double taxed for any donation that we give to the library, specifically because the county dollars are also being contributed on the other side. And I just wanna make sure you understand that. Uh, the other point, um, I wanted to make is, um, to caution my fellow council members that we have a maintenance agreement with the library. And I know that we've done some projects, but that's actually additional money that we don't budget for. So, um, you know, we just gotta be careful, uh, making these allocations, because I don't, quite frankly, I don't know where we could, uh, get the money, the additional money, based on what we have projected for our next fiscal year. But I do appreciate your services and what you do, but I think it's gonna be very difficult for us to meet your request. But that's all the comments I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Travis. Um, I got a couple of questions. This is, um, Mayor Andy Moore. Um, and, and again, um, maybe some difficult questions, whatever, but you, you gotta understand, this is quite a large, uh, increase. And I understand what you said, if you don't ask, you're not gonna get. So I, hey, I, I applaud you for, for coming before the board and, and asking for this sum of money, first and foremost, um. So, but, but with that being said, um, I gotta feel comfortable about it, and so do the board members. So, um, so I got a few questions that I would like to ask.
Yes, sir.
Um, so as far as the, the amount in increase in funding requests, how much of that will go towards salaries and benefits?
Hold on, let me get my paper real quick, because I knew you were gonna ask that. I'm doing the math right now, so I'll give you the accurate number, okay?
Okay, yeah, no problem, no problem.
Okay, so the salary altogether, it's salary and benefit altogether, um, is nine thousand seven hundred seventy-two, eight hundred and sixty, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's what the salary and the fringes altogether.
Okay, not, little over ninety-seven hundred dollars, is that what you said? Okay. So now, what, uh, and I know you've mentioned some things, but what would the remainder of the funding be for?
Well, we'll be prob, we will start doing more computer classes. We have a lot of your residents coming in needing how to use a computer, because they're trying to find jobs. So that means we gotta help out, um, be able to do more computer classes, give them those tools to empower them to be able to apply for jobs, do resume training, do, um, I would like to go out into the community, get more involved with Smithfield. So that means we're gonna do more outreach throughout your town. Um, also just start new programs that your community wants. So I know several people want a crochet class, that costs money. They want to do a sewing class, that costs money. I'm gonna see if I can get some of that stuff to be donated. But this is the stuff that your community is asking for your library to provide them. Um, STEM classes, uh, for our kids to learn science, math, technology, um, get our kids ready, um, for their next grade.
So, so forgive me if this is a, I'm not trying to be funny. Crochet and sewing classes, is that normal, or something that a, a library provides?
Yes, they, we always have different ones. Yeah, yeah, you'll be surprised, like, at one library, they check out pressure washers. Um, it's, it's really weird, but they provide those types of services. If the community says, this is what we want, like a coloring class. Um, I used to do, in Tennessee, I used to have the, a self-defense class in my library. I had a guy from a dojo come in and teach the ladies self-defense classes. So those are different requests that different communities ask for your library.
Gotcha, okay. Now, are library employees considered county, Johnston County employees?
Yes, at, at this location here, just in Smithfield, they are Johnston County workers, yes.
So benefits and so forth are, are, are supplied by the county?
Yes.
You participate in county retirement, or whatever, insurance and so forth through the county?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now, how, how many citizens in Smithfield are actually library cardholders? And you may have mentioned this earlier, but.
Yes, I did. So in Smithfield, we have about six thousand nine hundred, um, seventeen residents that come into our library, our library, uh, monthly.
Okay, they come in monthly. So now, how do you determine if they're actually residents?
Well, when we, when they do a library card.
It's not a trick, it's not a trick question, uh-huh.
I know it's not, honey. And honestly, get a library card, we ask for their driver's license. And then through that, we'll put all the information in there. And so that's how we'll know if you're a Smithfield or you're a county resident.
Gotcha. So you're doing it if it has da-da-da, Smithfield, North Carolina, correct? And, and the reason I ask that, if, if that number, six thousand nine hundred and seventeen, I just, I just wanna be careful in saying that's a Smithfield resident. Um, even our, our manager sent out today a map of how far out the zip code of two-seven-five-seven-seven goes. It goes almost to Cleveland and so forth. So for someone bringing in a library card, and it's got two-seven-five-seven-seven, does not necessarily mean that they are a taxpayer and citizen of the town of Smithfield. So I just wanna make that clear. Um, and we got, we have to be careful when we say that, because if that's the way that you're looking at it, and we're not verifying that they're actually Smithfield city, uh, or town residents, then that number may be skewed somewhat. Just, just wanna put that out there, okay?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Um, 'cause I, I, you know, I, I struggle with that many, you know, just from Smithfield, you know, Smithfield proper within the city limits, and, you know, I, I have no idea what that number is. Um, okay. And so then, okay. That may be all the, maybe all the questions that I have at present.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions?
Uh, yes, I, I do have one question. And I, I finally believe the library serves a great purpose in Smithfield, so I, I just have a few questions there. Um, currently, the county, uh, based on one of the slides you gave us, I can't remember if it was in your budget, or, uh, maybe your application, they currently give a fair amount more than we do. And based on the current recommended numbers, we were gonna increase our percentage by five percent, and they were gonna decrease, which doesn't seem like a big increase necessarily. But your budget is, uh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it right now. Rather large, obviously, it's a big outfit, no doubt, uh, one point three million dollars. So what you're asking for from the county over what they gave last year is an eighteen percent increase. And what you're asking for from us is a forty-eight percent increase. And I know it's housed in Smithfield. It just seems like, as Councilman Scott suggested earlier, we're really paying taxes both ways, which is here nor there, because the library's located here. But it just seems like we took a tremendous jump over what the county is. And as indicated earlier, they have a lot deeper pockets, so to speak. So I guess, I mean, it's a lot of money either way, no matter, it's got to come from somewhere. And I know you don't have the fund balance to draw from anymore. So it's got to come from somewhere to take care of what you need to take care of. But since, um, Mr. Johnson came and spoke to us last year, what's been implemented since then to further cut spending? I know you've gone along with the county and their programs as far as, when they had a raise, y'all had a raise, insurance benefits. I believe those are probably obligations you have to do, the insurance and whatnot. Um, what's changed since he came before us before?
Well, we did a lot of cutting. Um, it's pretty much, we're not doing spending like we used to. Um, pretty much, we're just looking at, only thing we're paying out now is just salaries and fringes. Um, last month, we only did salaries and fringes. And utilities. And utilities. Um, so we're really not spending like we used to. So we're buying books, but it's at a very slow rate. Um, when I first walked in here, I was able to cut a hundred thousand off of the salary, I mean, not off the salary, but out, out of the whole budget. But then, on top of that, we were able to get seventy-five thousand from, um, Johnston County.
So most of the cuts that have come about have actually come in the form of services you provide, and not actually in salaries. I mean, those have remained fairly consistent throughout this hardship that you walked into, granted. I mean, you walked into it, so, okay.
A mess.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I had one more question, this is, uh, Andy. Um, and, and forgive me if some of this information is in the presentation that you emailed, I have not seen that. Um, how many employees do you have in Smithfield? And, and when we say, you know, the salaries and, and the additional money is going to, towards salaries, is all that money for employees that are working at the Smithfield location?
Yes, sir, all of it. And we have altogether nineteen employees.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, the, uh, to ask a question, the item thirty on your budget for library says department revenues. The, the, the line item thirty-three, one oh two, it's the second line item, item that says six hundred fifty thousand. Is that, was that transferred from general fund? Is that, that general fund from the county, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's the county, uh-huh.
Okay, 'cause I, I'm trying to figure out this, I'm trying to figure out what it was.
That's fine, I had to learn how to read it too. You remember, I'm from Tennessee, so it was a little different on my end.
I understand.
Renita, this is Mike Scott. I had a couple points of clarity, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Um, the four hundred thousand dollars that you're asking for from the council and the town, uh, is that, is that a one-time request? You're gonna be able to get yourself back in line next year? Or is this, are you considering this an ongoing amount that you'll be asking for in future years?
It's gonna be an ongoing amount.
Okay. Do you anticipate that increasing next year?
No.
No, okay. Um, second question I, I had was, if I heard you right, you said of the hundred and thirty thousand dollars that you're asking in addition, only nine thousand seven hundred dollars of that is going to salary and benefits for employees?
Ninety-seven, it's ninety-seven thousand.
Ninety-seven thousand.
Ah, okay. I, I don't think that's what you said.
Now, that's not what I had wrote down, and I didn't make it.
Yeah, that, that's why I, that's why I asked again, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, ninety-seven thousand.
Oh. Okay, all right. All right, and that, that, that's, that's more like it, okay. All right, thank you, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Yeah, that, that's what I had. That, that, those were the only two points I had, thank you.
Okay. I'm southern, so if you can't hear me, I'm sorry.
All right. It, it may have been my fault, I, my apologies, but I thought you said ninety-seven hundred.
Any other questions for Ms. Barksdale?
I, I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to say, first of all, I appreciate the work that you folks do. And please don't take the hard questions that we ask to be a, in any way, uh, meant to, uh, take away from the, all the work that you guys do, and the, and the, the, the great job that is, is contributing to the, to the well-being of our community. That is not being intended at all. It's simply based on numbers of what we're trying to figure out, how we do, how we manage our money, how we justify what we do to our taxpayers. Because as a taxpayer of town of Smithfield myself, I wanna make sure every dime, every penny is justified. And so we ask these hard questions, I, I wanna make sure you understand, there's nowhere we trying to make any accusations or anything against you folks. It's simply saying that we have to do due diligence, and make sure that whatever it is that we do, we can justify to our, um, citizens of the town of Smithfield, because that's what they put us here to do.
Right.
So thank you for your efforts and what you do, I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you. And like, this is my first presentation, so I was a little nervous anyway, 'cause I would have liked to be in the room with y'all to talk about this, 'cause I'm asking for a big increase, and I'm doing it over the phone.
All right, thank you, Ms. Barksdale, we appreciate you giving us your time and energy tonight, and we appreciate all you do. Um, I'll be in contact with you, um, this week, if you're around, so I can get some clarity on a few other questions. But, uh, other than that, Shannon will be in contact with you as we work through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next presenter, presenter tonight is, uh, Susan Stem with Reach Mentoring Ministry. This is a new request of one thousand dollars. Um, Susan, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for sticking around, and you go ahead and proceed when you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much, um, for having me on tonight. Um, again, I am Susan Stem, and, um, I've been a foster mom since two thousand eleven. And, um, during that time of being a foster mom, I was made aware of the plight of foster children, and especially those that age out. Um, often they become homeless, go into prostitution, trafficking, drugs, incarceration, or they can repeat the cycle. Um, I saw such a, such a sadness of what's going on with these kids. And so in two thousand sixteen, I founded this nonprofit to reach out to foster kids, kids at risk, and especially those that have aged out. Um, we've got some mentors and, um, trying to provide support. One of our first, um, events that we began with, um, I was made aware that when foster kids come into care, they're usually given two trash bags to put their belongings in, um, when they have to leave their home, whether middle of the night or whatever. So we had volunteers, um, making backpacks, and we gathered, um, lots of donations of hygiene items, blankets, coloring books, crayons, something to give a little bit of comfort to these kids as they're being removed from their homes. Also, if they're from a meth home, they have no belongings, they cannot leave with anything in their home. We've also been doing events at, at the children's homes, Falcon Children's Home, Middlesex, and Baptist Children's Homes. Um, we've been providing birthday cards to the foster kids, because a lot of kids never have a birthday recognized. And we've also had, um, donations of gift cards that, like, five, five to ten dollar gift cards to Walmart or whatever, so they can get something for their birthday. Um, we've been working with DSS, starting to partner with them, doing events with them, um, working with the Lynx Group, which is thirteen to eighteen-year-olds, um, young people, and also the eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds that have aged out, but can still receive a stipend from DSS. Um, we, we get needs all the time. Just recently, I have two foster girls that have aged out, they're living in Kenley in a very poor apartment that probably should be condemned, it's covered with mold, they had no mattresses. I had, I had volunteers provide, um, mattresses for them, which are probably gonna get moldy in just a short little bit. Um, some of the kids that I know that have aged out, um, one young lady, she's living in her car. One young man, he was begging at one of the, um, DSS programs, will you take me home? Will you please take me home? Will you please adopt me? Eighteen-year-old, young man, strapping young man. Um, we ha, I have another young lady at App State, she actually made it to college during this Corona. She, she has nowhere to go, but the school is letting her stay on campus right now. She's also on the spectrum of Asperger's, and so she really does not have a lot of social skills or able to really defend herself, and she actually loves to work in the library. So that's not a real helpful. So that's not a real helpful thing, even with this Corona going on. But, um, so we're ongoing providing hygiene kits, and you know they're consumable. Um, one of our long-term goals, I'd love to have a, um, some kind of a multipurpose building on a piece of land that, like, when emergency situations and kids don't have a place to stay, that they could stay, even like a residential facility, like an old nursing home, that they could out dorms and, and pay, pay some rent, but have a place to go so they're not on the street. Um, there's been some kids that we've found have been living in this garbage dump over time golden corral before, and, um, it's just heartbreaking when you realize what's going on. Um, right in our own community, um, we do not have enough foster homes for these kids, so sometimes they are shipped out to other counties. But all the kids, I mean, I think at one time there was like three hundred and some foster children. That's not even including all the ones that are aging out. We've also been trying to schedule some, um, budgeting classes for the older kids so they can learn how to, um, handle their money that they get from DSS. It's only, it's like six hundred and fifty-some dollars a month, which is not a lot, but it's something when you have nothing. Um, I'm also a school nurse at Triple S and South Smithfield Elementary and Choice Plus, which is for the kids that get in trouble. And, um, so kids come to me all the time, not just for medical needs. Honestly, it's more mental health issues. And, um, I give out hygiene kits there, because even if they're not in foster care, a lot of times they're just in such poverty, poor conditions. So, um, we have no staff on here. I am the director and founder, but, um, I do not receive an income. Everything that we receive, we give straight back to the kids when needs come in. Um, we, we channel it right back to the kids. Um, so that's what we do, and, um, looking forward to seeing what, what we can do more in the future to help these young people.
Thank you. Any questions for Susan?
Uh, this is Council Malie speaking, and, um, I'd just definitely like to commend you. Um, I myself, I'm educated at Clayton High School, so I, I definitely understand, um, the need uh, for some of these kids, 'cause we, we get them all the time from all across the state. Um, also, I have a couple of mentoring organizations myself that, um, you know, even outside of, you know, what you're trying to budget, you know, we're always looking, um, to kinda help out, you know, with other ministries or whatever. So, um, I've been in, you know, complete touch with, uh, Mr. Allen, the, the principal, so I, I'll be definitely reaching out to you, um, especially, you know, to be able to get some supplies that you're talking about and, um, 'cause I, I, I understand the need, because I see it every day myself. So I definitely commend you.
Well, thank you. I, I am in, I am pleased to report. I, I try and put out mentoring needs, and especially even at South Smithfield Elementary, we've had, um, some men that have, um, started volunteering with South Smithfield right before the Corona happened. And, um, he's even reached out to me since then and asked me if he could, he could continue to write to those kids, because they have no role models. And honestly, this is our next generation. If we don't do something, these are the kids that are gonna be taking care of us one day when we get older, and it's, it's not fair. I mean, they, they've just been dealt such a horrible hand of cards in this life, and it's their parents' fault, but it's not their fault. And, um, it's scary for them. I can't even imagine right now during the Corona with those of us that still have our jobs, but much less, most of these kids have minimum, minimum wage jobs. Most of them have lost their jobs. And honestly, um, there was a volunteer that donated fifty Easter baskets at Easter time, and we went and donated them. And my husband, when we donated, when we took one to the, um, apartment in Kenley, he told me, he goes, "Susan, do not come nearby yourself." But this is what these two girls live in. I mean, it, it's just terrible what's happening in, uh, with them.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Stem?
Yeah, this is, uh, Councilman Dunn. I just had one quick question, Miss Stem. First of all, first of all, thank you for what you're doing, as for everybody that's been before us tonight. But, uh, how long has this organization been around? I, I didn't see that in the notes. I was just curious.
Um, I began, we began with meetings, planning it in two thousand sixteen, but it actually wasn't, it did not become a nonprofit until two thousand eighteen, so we're very new.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Susan, for coming before us tonight and, um, presenting. Uh, thanks for all you do. Sounds like a great program. Um, Shannon will be in contact with you as we work through this process.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, we have a s- small conflict with, um, the agenda versus page six of your draft budget. So we are gonna follow the agenda here and go with, um, the Smithfield Rescue Mission. Next, Mr. Ben Olson, who is requesting ten thousand dollars. This is a new, uh, request this year. Mr. Olson, are you here?
I'm here.
Uh, go ahead, sir, when you're ready.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. And, um, definitely, uh, for sure not requested from town of Smithfield before. Um, and I honestly didn't know what to request there. Um, but I'll just go ahead and introduce myself. I think a lot of you probably have met quite, quite a few of you. Um, I really appreciate the work y'all do. It is tough, and I, I don't envy you. I'll say that. I don't envy the position that, that you're in as councilman. Uh, and anyway, um, thank you. So, uh, the Smithfield Rescue Mission, uh, I'll start. We are, of course, a five oh one C three. We've been around since nineteen seventy-seven. Um, I think, uh, for, for people that don't know, Paula Margie Olson founded it. Um, that, that is my mom and dad. Um, I, um, uh, lost my place here. So, uh, we've got twenty-one beds for men, seven beds for women and children. And, uh, I think the programs and services we offer are, uh, New Life Program for Men. That's a therapeutic, community-based approach to helping people with, really just gaining control of life wherever it's out of control. It's not always drug addiction. It's not always, uh, some, a lot of the things you would necessarily think of, but that's New Life Program. Uh, there are emergency, um, emergency shelter for men, um, is in conjunction, connected right in the same spot as our, of course, New Life Program, housed in one spot at our men's location, uh, near downtown Smithfield. Um, several, uh, house for women and children, uh, and, yeah. Excuse me. Seven beds there, just a healing and peaceful environment and a place where women and women with children can come and, uh, gain control of life, really wherever it's out of control. Uh, we offer a lot of different services, direct services. As you can imagine, uh, people come with lots of different problems. Uh, we offer, um, lots of, uh, of course, direct services, one being case management, um, essential services. Um, we, um, of course, do three meals a day, provide three great, amazing meals a day, I'll say. Um, just a lot of different people, a lot of different organizations and, um, businesses help us with that, with food, often have an abundance. And out of that abundance, we have an outreach called Blessing Baskets. Uh, what, we were calling it Twelve Baskets, that was a little confusing for people. Uh, it wasn't just twelve baskets we were giving to the community, it was many, many baskets, but it's just a pattern after the, um, scripture of Matthew. Uh, there's, there's a lot of food left over, so we provide a lot of food in the community. Probably touch about, um, seven hundred to seven hundred fifty individuals in the community with food, um, that's in abundance to what we have. Uh, we serve about thirty, last year was about thirty-four thousand, a little over thirty-four thousand meals in-house to our men, women, and children. Provided about seventy-four hundred, or seven thousand four hundred twenty-ninths of lodging in two thousand nineteen. Um, we are a Christian ministry, but of course, people don't have to be a Christian or sign on any dotted line or say any prayers to, to be a part of what we do. Um, often they do turn to God. They do turn to, um, uh, God for, for life change. Um, so many, we, we've had a lot of men and women and children through the years that have returned to us and have, have just, have been grateful and come full circle. Some are volunteering from time to time. Um, I'd love to talk with any of you at any point if you have questions for me. And, um, I think that's the overview. Um, I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Questions or comments for Mr. Olson?
Mr. Mike, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes.
Uh, what is your utilities run, um, on your campus a month roughly? Water, sewer?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm not the bookkeeper. Um, it's, uh, it is, I think it's roughly, I don't know, but I could get you, I could get you that information.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I'd be glad to get that to you anytime. Email me or something like that.
Do you just have, do, do you just have one account, uh, one power meter? Or do you have two facilities in there?
Uh, it should be one in Smithfield. We have, our location for women and children is out, is like, it's in Smithfield, but it's in the county, I guess, served by the county.
Okay. Is it okay if we have the clerk pull? Is it okay if the clerk pulls your power bill?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
That's all, Mayor.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the work that they're doing. Also, I've been familiar with them for, uh, probably most of that entire, uh, not, maybe most of that entire time. So, 'cause I knew that, I know that mom and dad actually, actually, I'm the one that mentioned to them about looking to, uh, see if they can get some funding through Smithfield, because they are a part of Smithfield and the work that they do serves the, the citizens and all in the community. And so, um, I do appreciate, appreciate what they're doing and what the, and the stand that they've had in the community over these years. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. My pleasure, our pleasure. To God be the glory.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you for your presentation, your time this evening, and all you do. Um, Shannon will be in touch with you in the future as we work through this process, let you know how things are going.
Thank you. I appreciate you all.
Thank you. Our next request this evening is from Triangle East Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Mark McDonald. Mr. McDonald, are you here?
I am here.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, hi. Good evening, uh, Mayor Moore and, uh, Mike Scott and the council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. Um, and also thank you for your support of the chamber, uh, through all the years. Uh, in introduction, I currently serve as the vice chair of the economic development arm of the chamber. I'm also the board chair in waiting. In addition to that, I work for Venture Development in Selma, and we also represent the ownership group and manage Pine Needle Square in Smithfield. Um, you know, we're requesting four thousand dollars tonight from the, um, from Smithfield for the economic development, uh, arm of the chamber. And just kind of a, some brief highlights of what we do from an economic development standpoint is, over the last year, we really established a transportation committee, um, which is focused on, uh, anything that impacts our community from a transportation standpoint, whether it's I-95 and working with the DOT. But to be honest, a lot of our focus in the last year has really been working on the rail study projects and supporting not only the towns, but the county and representing Johnston County at various rail meetings and keeping everybody advised of what's going on with the studies. Um, really becoming a, a useful tool for the community and the importance of what rail can mean to all our communities. Um, second part of what we've done is form a real estate group. And really what that is, is just an opportunity from the leadership from, uh, all our communities to get together once a month and brainstorm and roundtable about what's working in their communities, uh, where, where could they use help? And is there expertise just in the next town over that might be able to provide some guidance? I know at that meeting, uh, Steve Wentzmann has attended, uh, Tim Kerrigan has attended and have provided valuable input to the, our, our fellow members, but also have received some, uh, input and guidance back. Uh, the other group that we've established is our branding committee, and that's really focused on the marketing of the chamber and our communities and trying to ensure that we're presenting what's currently going on in our communities. And I, I wanted to focus on that a little bit. What we've evolved from the branding committee is to start to make more marketing material, trade show exhibit, um, again, approve the videos and update, update our webpage. And prior to the covert, uh, COVID incident or situation that we're under now, the chamber had just unveiled an opportunity that we were going to attend ICSC in Charlotte and Vegas and start to line up trade shows to go to present, uh, represent our communities in Smithfield for opportunities that are probably just a level below Chris Johnson, but are still very important to our cities and towns. Um, yeah, I know Stephen had given me a list of, a wishlist for Smithfield, and we were going to tackle ICSC and bring that list and see if we could help start progress of bringing some of those businesses to the towns. Um, so once we come out of this COVID situation, Mike and I will sit down and start to map out what trade shows and what opportunities are we going to have to represent Smithfield in the chamber moving forward. Um, I think the last thing I'd just like to mention is, as, as they take a step back now and take a look at the value of the chamber to Smithfield and our communities, is through this COVID situation, Mike and the team have stepped up for all the members of our communities, not only if they're members of the chamber or not, to give them guidance on filling out the PPP applications for small businesses, for looking for grants opportunities to keep their doors open during these times. So it's nice to be there when times are good. It's more important to be there for our small businesses when times are not so good. And Mike and that staff have just done an outstanding job of being there and providing guidance and insights to all our small businesses. And really, that's all I had to present tonight. So, questions?
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I will alert the council that this is a status quo request. It is, um, equal to the funding level that they are currently receiving.
Great.
Four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Any, any other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, for your time and efforts and your presentation this evening. Mr. McDonald, are you still there? Yep, we lost him. Our next presenter is Ms. Sheila Singleton from Career and Technical Leadership Academy. This is a new request of one thousand dollars. Sheila, are you here?
I'm here. Can you guys see me?
We can. You go right ahead.
Good. Thank you for this opportunity, and yes, I am a new presenter. I'm the principal of Career and Technical Leadership Academy. We are the early college on the campus of JCC. Uh, we have, uh, will soon be completing our fourth year as an early college program this coming, um, May fifteenth, which is the, um, last day of school for us. Um, and we had originally presented a request of a thousand dollars, and it was for the purpose of having funds for our prom, which of course we did have to cancel, as well as, um, money for our graduation. We always like to try to do a nice graduating, uh, program with a, a senior brexit, and, um, that was one of the reasons why the request was made. C T L A is a very small school right now, and even for the coming year, we will have a student body of about two hundred students, and that will continue to grow. But our funding is very limited, and, um, we, um, it's not for donations from parents and, um, fundraisers that- and, um, fundraises that we may do, you going to Zach's fees and so forth for, um, spirit night. Um, oftentimes, our general fund can be very challenged. I almost thought about, um, maybe just canceling out. I said, "Well, our prom, we had to cancel it." And, um, I do have this request out here. But nonetheless, when things get back to normal, it's going to be business as usual. So, that's why I decided to come forward anyway and to just still let this request be made known. We try to provide, uh, activities for our students, um, that will increase engagement to really give them a memorable high school experience. And, um, through the prom and through senior, uh, graduation is one of the ways that we try to do that. And, um, but I can tell you that oftentimes, with the general fund, it can be very limited. And, um, we do not waste the money that we have, but it's very little. And everything costs money regardless of what it is that you may be trying to do, even on a small scale. And, um, that's why I'm coming before this committee today. Um, the request is still four thousand, and hopefully that can go into our general fund, uh, for next year. But we still are hoping that we will be able to have some format of a graduation. That's what we are hearing from our students. They're saying, Miss Singleton, even if it means not doing it until June or July, they want to be able to end their year, uh, in their graduation, not in a virtual format. And I really want the same thing for them as well. But, um, that is the, basically, the nature of my request. And, um, if you have any other questions for me?
Ms. Singleton, this is Mr., Ms. Singleton, this is Mr. Lee, Coach Lee from Clayton High School. I'm glad you was able to come on tonight and request. And, um, I understand exactly what you're going through, uh, with your students. And, um, so I, I definitely support your request. And, um, I'm glad you, you know, didn't back out and was decided that you would, uh, request money anyway. So, uh, I definitely support you, and we are going to get through this with our students. So, um,
We are.
We end it together.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Singleton?
So, this is Mayor Moore. I'm, I'm sorry, forgive me. But can you, can you explain a little bit more, I, I, I know you went into it at the beginning, but a little bit more about your program and where you're housed and so forth and so on? I'm just not very familiar with it.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I can talk on and on about this program.
I figured you probably could.
But I know we are limited on time, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah, but just real quick, I'm sorry.
The cooperative innovative, um, program, that's our early college. And that's how, um, we're basically funded is through the cooperative innovative programs. Um, and it's for the early college programs throughout the state of North Carolina. And, um, they are constantly growing. But the focus of Career and Technical Leadership Academy, our students that come to us, because now we're, we're are the second early college program in Johnston County. And we are on the campus of JCC. Early College Academy was there prior to us. And our program basically offers our students to be able to finish with high school graduation requirements being met. But when they finish with us, they will also have an associate's degree in one of five pathways. And that's early childhood, medical assistance, nurse aid, applied engineering, or information technology. It just depends upon which area does the student feel most drawn to. And, um, our students, when they leave us after the, in their super senior year, because they don't graduate in their fourth year per se. We have some that try, but they really graduate in that fifth year or the thirteenth year, and it's called the super senior year. But they will have the option of going directly into the workforce if they so decide and really start right out of high school, um, with a very lucrative career. Many of them being able to start out at maybe, uh, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a, a year, and that's entry level with, uh, the potential to make much more. For those that decide to go into the nurse aid, um, pathway, a lot of those students are deciding that they want to go into the medical field, but they may start in that capacity first. But a lot of them are saying that they're going to take that associate's degree program and maybe even transfer into a four-year university. So, they still have that option. They will have earned, uh, credit that will transfer, some of them, depending upon the pathway, into a four-year university setting. Some of our students can start, uh, university or college, um, four-year, uh, university with maybe a college, uh, a, a year of college already paid for, or at least a semester to a full year already paid for. Some of our students may decide that they want to do a combination of both. I want to work, uh, in the field that I've earned this associate's degree in as well as go to college and maybe, uh, kind of pace myself. Some may decide I'm going to put this associate's degree on hold, and I just want to now continue on focusing in college with this, um, with this degree, whether it be early childhood, nurse aid, or, or some of them even with information technology. And some of our programs are even partnered with some of the universities here in the area. But that is what has made this early college program so attractive because, um, a lot of our parents are like, "Well, you know, I'm not sure if I can even, um, help my child, you know, go to school." Or some of the students are saying, "I want to be able to get out of school and immediately begin to help my family. And if I can find a good job right out of high school, making pretty decent money, um, to start, then that's what I'd like to do." Um, I can go on, but, um, I, I'll stop there to see if there are any additional questions.
Uh, no, but I mean, for me, that, that answers my question. I mean, that, that definitely gives me some, some background. I mean, no, it was great. It was great. It was great, um, because I, I really wasn't sure. So, that, the, the different programs that you offer and so forth and the career pathways, that just, that definitely answered my question. So, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Singleton? Okay, Ms. Singleton, thank you for presenting and giving us your time this evening. Sounds like a great program. We appreciate all you do.
It's awesome. Thank you so much, and thanks for the opportunity. Mm-hmm.
Please, uh, contact Shannon at your convenience, and she'll keep you up to speed.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next six presentations are from local schools, which are all status quo presentations, uh, for one thousand dollars each that, uh, the council has chosen to support in the past. Uh, we'll start off with, uh, the Innovation Academy, which, uh, did request a thousand dollars, um, requested a little late, but they are included in our, our requests. This evening, we have Kelly Johnson with us. Kelly, are you here?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right. Please, uh, proceed when you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much, um, again, for the platform. And I do apologize for our, our tardiness and, and appreciate the consideration nonetheless. Um, so, just a little background about Innovation Academy at South Campus. Um, this is the, um, we're concluding the end of our third year of operation. Um, we are the district's lab school, uh, where we provide relevant and personalized learning experiences , um, to majority first-generation college students from along the I-95 corridor. Um, our students engage in project-based learning opportunities. Um, we have a social-emotional focus and utilize restorative techniques, um, for relationship building and repair. Um, and so, we are also set up for visits from, um, others who are seeking to see these types of cognitive practices in place, um, and to, um, learn and, and, and grow from that. And so, as we are, uh, as we've grown, and I mentioned the primary population, you know, that we serve, uh, we do have, um, a renewed focus this year on our, um, I-95 corridor. We only recruited along the corridor. And, um, of our, of our rising sixth graders, um, who we expect to come, um, to us, um, twenty-nine of them are specifically from Smithfield. Um, sixty-two are from the corridor altogether, which we define as micro-tomatoes. So, um, a little larger area, but, um, but, but twenty-nine, as I said, from, from Smithfield specifically. And so, we do, um, have a, a high free reduced lunch population, um, just with the correlation of the, of the, um, kind of students that we are seeking to serve and, and change the, um, educational experience for in, um, with hopes and goals of changing the narrative for them and for their future, uh, families. And so, we have needs as they relate to, uh, food and clothing and, um, hygiene items, all consumable, um, things that, you know, our students, we, we have this vision for Cinderella's Closet, as we call it. Um, and we do have some resources that we've begun to acquire for that, but, um, would love the opportunity to continue to build that as well as, um, you know, when, when we're talking about students from poverty, you know, having, having the opportunity to go on field trips. Uh, we, we do have needs in regard to that as well. And so, so we always ask, um, you know, our parents who can, you know, to, to help, uh, induce additional funds as, as they're able. But, um, we often find ourselves, um, also, you know, needing to, to kick in and help, um, kids anyway. And then, as a one-to-one school, because that's how you, that's how you do personalized learning, um, providing content to students when they're ready for it, rather than having to wait, um, for other students in the future. Um, or on the flip side of that, you know, being, having to move along when it really hadn't mattered, um, a standard or a competency. Um, those devices that we have, you know, we, we have great need as they relate to acquiring and, and also repairing, uh, the ones that we do have and, and providing those to our students. And so, those are the areas that we, um, that we intend to focus on with any, um, grant money that we are, um, awarded. And we also want to, um, you know, say with gratitude for, uh, want to express gratitude for, um, the council, uh, funding our robotics, um, outfitting, uh, robotics club outfitting this past year. Um, very much appreciated, uh, we were able to, to pull some resources together for that. So, that's a little background and the context for our request.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions for Ms. Johnson?
Kelly, this is Marlin. Uh, definitely like to thank, um, your leadership that you're doing over here, uh, with these students. Um, I've had the chance to come over and visit, um, know some of the staff. And, um, you definitely have my support. And, um, you know, um, just, you know, keep on keeping on. Um, though, you're not a program, you're a school, just like the other schools are, um, in the Johnston County Public School Systems. And just to make a note, um, to the rest of the, um, council, mayor, town manager, just backing up to the Career and Technical Leadership Academy, that is also a part of the Johnston County Public Schools. It's not just like, it's, it's not just a program. It's part of all, you know, six other principals who are speaking now. So, they, they are not to be, um, you know, not included. So, they, they are still a part of the Johnston County Public School, um, just in case you didn't know. Uh, could have been a mistake.
Thank you, Marlin. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for giving us your time and being patient with us this evening. We appreciate all you do.
Oh, absolutely, and I appreciate you guys as well. Thank you.
Uh, Shannon will be in touch with you as we work through this process.
Right, thank you.
Manager Scott?
Yes.
This is, uh, Mayor, this is David Stevens. Um, I know that we could go through the rest of these guys and hear the same thing, even other way to Ms. Bryant, bless her heart. I guess she's still there. It'd be ten o'clock before we talk to her. And I think we're all agreeable that we will extend them some funding and it'll all be equal. Um, and for time's sake, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, but especially in this format, um, if y'all would like to continue and, or just kind of throw them on the, however you'd like to continue. I was just wondering if we could put them in a, in a group somehow for time's sake, or I'll stay here and keep listening. I, I hope I said that right.
I'd say we give the first, I'd say we give the first person the same amount of respect that we gave the last person. That's me personally. That's my take on it.
Okay, no problem.
Just as me. Just as me. I mean.
I'm not disagreeable or agreeable. I was just kind of throwing it out there, but that's, that's fine.
So, so let me ask a question. Are there any specific, um, questions or anything that any of the council members have for any of the other additional school, um, that are waiting to present? I mean, I certainly understand Councilman Lee's comments, but I'd also, I want to be respectful of their time too. And it's, I got eight thirty-five, and we've got five or six more to get through. So, are there any specific questions that we have? If not, we, I may, may make a recommendation that we just move forward. Anybody have any issues at this time with, with, with what's been requested? The thousand dollars each is what, which is what we've done in the past. Any issues with that? Again, it's not set in stone for the, for the schools that are online right now, but any, any issues there at this moment?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I have no issue.
Mayor? I, I, I just like to say that, um, I, I also though, uh, I, you know, I, I recognize time is important. But I do think that, that the, these folks did stay online for us all this time. And I, I, I think that they probably could give just a, a brief, like, a minute or something to give them an opportunity to say something. I know that might be five or six of them on minutes. But, but again, to, to Marlin's point, I agree with him that, that, you know, these people give an opportunity just to say a word about their program. Not fifteen minutes, but a word about their program, I think is important.
Okay.
If they would like to. If they want to, if they're okay to say, "Yes, I'm okay," then that's okay. But giving them an opportunity is a different story. If they would like to say something, I'd like to hear it.
All right.
Absol- absolutely. Let's do that.
Okay, Mike? Okay, Mr. Mayor, do you want us to proceed?
Yes, sir. That's fine.
All right. Um, we have next, Newse Charter School, Ms. Nikki Nowinski. Uh, Nikki, are you here?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you so much. Um, I will keep it short and sweet. Um, you know, Newse Charter School is a K-12 charter school in Smithfield, and we have been at our location for about fifteen years. We definitely appreciate the support that you all have shown, shown us in the past. Uh, you've been fun, helping to fund graphing calculators for our senior academy. And for next year, we're requesting, um, a thousand dollars to help fund Chromebooks for our, uh, K-2 students. We feel like we have enough calculators now that we want to focus our technology needs to our younger students who definitely need these computers, especially right now in this, um, virtual time that we have in schools.
Thank you, Nikki. Appreciate all you do. Um, anyone from the council have any questions or comments? All right. Please don't take their silence as- All right. Please don't take their silence as not interested, because everybody's, really appreciates what's going on over at News Charter School. I know my grandson does, who goes there, so, uh, thanks for hanging out.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the.
And presenting, so.
Thank you, appreciate.
Thank you.
(laugh) Well, thank you. We, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Uh, next we have LaShunda Faison from, uh, Smithfield Middle School. Go ahead, Ms. Faison.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me correctly, uh, clearly?
Yes, you're very clear.
Perfect. On behalf of Smithfield Middle School, we would like to express our sincerest gratitude for the continued support of the town of Smithfield. Smithfield Middle, we are a Title I school, and we have a certain allocation of Title I funds that we use to support our students in the instructional realm. And, um, the money that we do receive from the town of Smithfield, we use it to support our general fund for various initiatives that ultimately benefit our students and staff that are outside of the, uh, Title I. Um, we did receive a, a thousand dollars last year as well, and we would use the allocated funds to assist with beginning-of-the-year celebrations for our staff and students. We usually have a breakfast and a tee-shirt that we provide our staff, and that helps us launch the start of the year as we want it to be the most positive and envi- um, inviting environment, so we can best support our students throughout the year. In addition, we do have a great need with our student population as we are Title I, and sometimes our students and families aren't able to provide the financial backing when we have various activities such as field trips. And we do, um, lack the presence of a parent/teacher organization at our school. So, the money that we do receive from the town of Smithfield will help support those students that may not otherwise be afforded certain educational opportunities.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? Again, thank you for all you do. It's much appreciated. Um, I know we've had a school resource officer at a middle school for a long time, so it's been a great partnership for the town.
Most definitely, indeed.
Um, again, thanks for presenting tonight.
All right, thank you. You enjoy your evening.
Our, our next presenter is from Smithfield Selma High School, uh, being Mr. Junior Creech. Mr. Creech, are you here?
Hey, this is, uh, David Allen, Principal of the high school. I gave Mr. Creech a night off, so, uh...
Oh, all right.
But, uh, but you guys talk as long as you want. I'm sitting on my front porch rocking in my rocking chair. I don't know what you guys are doing, but, uh, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable. But, uh, we appreciate the, uh, the council's support. Uh, we, we, we used your generous support the last couple of years to, uh, to show our teacher appreciation, appreciation to our teachers and staff. Uh, so often those funds are limited, uh, a lot like Ms. Faison, uh, said. We are a Title I school likewise, and, uh, we do have the instructional support dollars bound, you know, for the most part to meet those needs and, uh, within the confines of those budget line items. But, uh, but doing things for staff appreciation are very, some, sometimes just a little harder to do. A lot of our general funds that we generate, uh, we, we, we use for students, and we use for miscellaneous supplies, uh, to, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the entire school. But, uh, but I won't keep you long other than just to say we appreciate your support in the past, and, uh, we will certainly use, uh, the support, uh, as given. And, uh, we always make a note to our teachers when we pass out gifts, or when we do a meal or something of that nature, we say, "Hey, this, this is from the town of Smithfield. They're doing a great job supporting us." So, we try to just pass on to our staff so that they know they have your support.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Much appreciated. Thanks for all you do for, for Smithfield.
Yes, sir.
Hey, David, this is Andy. Um, since we're moving on, since I got you on the phone, so I'm gonna ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, can, uh, can you give in just thirty seconds or so, just a brief overview? I know you have contacted me regarding the 3D printing of masks that, uh, for, to help with some of our staff members. Can you just give a brief update on that or overview of it, if you don't mind?
Yep. Yeah, yes, sir. So, I don't know how much you guys know about 3D printing, but, uh, we have a robotics and an engineering program at Triple S, and so we do have, uh, two, uh, 3D printers on site, and we are able to print 3D masks. And, uh, we, we, in partnership with, uh, Representative Donna White at the, uh, General Assembly, would like to start printing those and making those available to, uh, first, our Smithfield law enforcement, uh, and then, uh, we'd like to, to Selma next, and, uh, and then, and perhaps Wilson's Mills, and, and then any other surrounding folks that need those, uh, those, those pieces. But Representative White is working on funding for us on that. Uh, we're trying, we've, we've established some funds. We have to put filters in those masks. Uh, the masks will be made out of a, a, a plastic filament that can be reused, and then we'll put a filter, much like a coffee filter, inside this mask. And, uh, it will filter about ninety-five percent, uh, efficiency, and then that filter is replaced approximately every forty hours. Uh, but, but those, that, that's a nominal expense, uh, compared to the, uh, to the mask piece. But, uh, but we're moving forward with that. We have fifty masks already printed, uh, about twenty-five mediums and twenty-five larges, and so we're ready to supply you with those when you, uh, when you need them. If you need more than fifty, we are continuing to print. We also have, uh, two additional 3D printers on order, waiting for those to come in from Amazon, hopefully, uh, this week or first of next week, and that will, uh, double our capacity. But our robotics team and our engineering teacher are, are working on that project.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you, David. I just wanted the council to hear that. And Mike, if you could, if you could reach out to David tomorrow, he had just a couple of specific questions, if you don't mind, if you could reach out to David.
Will do, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just for the council's information, you guys, uh, were very generous to robotics a couple of years ago and really poured into that program, and it, it's really doing well. They just won a, a, a major award in the state of North Carolina. Uh, they call it the gov- or they call it the Governor's Award. So, it's, it's per- uh, uh, Governor or Chancellor, I apologize for which one, something within their organization. But they're continuing to do great things, and we appreciate the foundation that you guys gave them to build on, and so, we're happy to give back to you guys in this kind of way if it's helpful. So, look forward to hearing from, uh, Town Manager Scott, and we'll help any way we can.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. Next, we have South Smithfield Elementary, Ms. Laura Mackey. Lori, are, are you here?
Yes. Hey, guys, can you hear me? This is Laura Mackey from South Smithfield. Everybody doing all right? Everybody still there?
We're all still here.
(laugh) Great, 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 great. Um, thank you so much for taking the time to hear our case. Um, when we did our first, um, application, just like in previous years, you guys have supported us with, um, adding money to our playground fund. We have a goal and a dream of, um, creating an inclusive playground for not only our school, but the whole, um, Smithfield community. Um, you know, the dream of, of a playground as such is, is quite expensive. It's, you know, pushing ninety thousand dollars. So, we continue to work with our PTA to raise funds, and of course, the funds that you provide, we deposit into account. And, and we're pushing about twenty thousand. (laugh) So, we're, we're reaching our dream, uh, or slowly. Um, but you know, as I sat here and with all this craziness that's going on, and listening to my fellow colleagues and my peers, and, um, after being at school today and looking at, at our general fund account, I realized that a lot of our funds that we normally collect to help us with teacher appreciation, with beginning-of-the-year, um, activities and, and just other things that we like to have that other funds can't pay for, most of those funds are provided by our pictures, our spring pictures, and our yearbooks, and the other fundraisers that we do during the spring. And I just, and I don't know why it just hit me, but today I was like, "Gosh, we're not even gonna be able to acquire those type of funds to help build our general fund account." So, even though the original application was for, um, to, to create and add money to our playground account, which is fantastic, um, the idea of, of your continued support from the town and allowing us to, to just use this money in our general fund so that we can provide and do things that we would have counted on our other fundraisers to do for us would be greatly appreciated. And, um, as others have said, we cannot thank the town of Smithfield enough for the support that you give our elementary school. Of course, we are the most dynamic elementary school in all of Smithfield, and, um, we just have a lot to be proud of, and, and again, just thank you. Thank you very much. And any questions, or if there's anything I can answer, I'll be glad to.
Anything for Ms. Mackey?
Ms. Mackey, this is Councilman Lee. We, we still gotta get our meeting. We gotta set our meeting up that we missed. But, uh, as, as we get through this, um, I, I'll, I'm committed program. It'll become the South Smithfield Elementary Men of Distinction. So, uh, once we get through this, we certainly have the gang.
Well, we are so excited, Marlin, and, you know, we were looking forward to the opportunity, and we still are. I think, you know, our students, especially our fifth-grade males, um, need a program like, um, what you're providing, and we couldn't be more excited. So, looking forward to connecting with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Have a nice evening.
And our last presenter tonight is Ms. Sharon Bryant for West Smithfield Elementary. She deserves a big round of applause for hanging out with us. Sharon, you go ahead and prepare.
Good evening, everyone. This is Sharon Bryant, Principal of West Smithfield Elementary. I am not gonna hold you. Um, I could say ditto, 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 based on what everyone has said. Nothing has really changed as far as everyone understands the Triple S strong feeder pattern, our economics and, um, our population. Our funds will be used, of course, for general funds. We're still working on things for our playground, 'cause a lot of the things that we use, um, we have to replenish each year. We use it towards also teacher appreciation. So, nothing's really changed. Um, PTO is working as hard as they can, but with the population that we have, our funds are limited. So, we appreciate your support for the last three years and would appreciate the continued support. And I thank you all for allowing us this time this afternoon, and I'm, will not hold you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Much appreciated, and thanks for all you do.
You're welcome.
Um, Mr. Manager, um, definitely, I just, I just want to, um, to say real quick, um, I know we've come to the end, but the end, in this case, is certainly not last. But, um, I admire Ms. Bryant, um, a whole lot. Actually, my daughter was attending West Smithfield Elementary, and by me being a Johnson County Pubic, um, school, um, employee, I was able to move her, uh, with no problem based on location. And I was still able to transfer her over to South Smithfield. And council, mayor, uh, manager, um, you know, one of the biggest things that happened is Ms. Bryant pretty much left me a message, uh, wanting to talk to me about, you know, why, why did I want to move my child out of this school? So, I definitely admire her. Um, I definitely like to thank, um, the manager, uh, for letting us use, uh, the Sherriard Community Center. Um, Ms. Bryant has been instrumental in making sure her kids have been fed every day over at the center from twelve to one. Uh, for those on the council that don't know, um, I did forfeit my salary, um, April and May, uh, to go to them kids over there, because, um, you know, right now, everybody's in that pandemic. But for some of the kids, um, these kids have always been in the pandemic, and it's not their fault. Um, you know, we talk about equality versus equity. Um, yeah, right now, you know, everybody's getting the same amount of one thousand dollars. Um, here again, one of the interesting, resting things that I found out this year is West Smithfield Elementary, they really don't have a PTO. And if you look at the demographics of the kids, then you will understand, um, that's why they not really having the different sales and stuff, because a lot of them parents and stuff, they, they can't afford it. Um, as we've gone through all the presentations tonight, and, you know, some of the big increases that some of the entities are wanting, um, I know a few years, we gave the Robotics Club, um, two thousand dollars. I just hope that we find, and I could say it for all the other schools, but I know we gave a club at Triple S, two thousand dollars. That's because we had somebody on the council, his child was in the Robotics Club. But for right now, I'm gonna be, uh, promoting to give West Smithfield, uh, just a little more money if we had it, because, uh, I see that they really, really need it, just like the other schools. Um, you know, West Smithfield don't even have basketball goals. Uh, Parks and Rec, they was able to give them some soccer goals. But, you know, in this case, it's not about being equal, but, you know, just a little bit of more. It's, it still ain't gonna suffice the equity. But, um, this is why, David, I'm sorry, that I definitely wanted to wait to the end, because, um, you know, I, I see what's going on over at West Smithfield, and these are some of the same kids that are over here in East Smithfield, and, you know, they, they struggle. But still, they are our future, so, um, that's kinda why I wanted to wait to the end, David, so I'm sorry.
Oh, no need to be sorry, Marlin. I, I, I was just, it was just a suggestion. I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear it, and I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear what you said.
I just, I just hope we can act on it, um, because I, I know, just like the rest of the schools, uh, you know, I, I know they could use a little more, so that's my take, Mayor, uh, Manager, and the rest of the council.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Marlin. I think with this COVID, I think a lot of them have fundraisers. So, I really think we need to step up our game this year. I mean, I'm, I'm agrees with you a hundred percent.
Ms. Bryant, are you still with us?
I am. Just thanking you all for what you do, and I just appreciate what you have done and whatever you still continue to do.
All right. Thank you for all you do. It's much appreciated, much respected.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that winds up our, uh, presentations tonight for non-departmental. Uh, it sounds like everybody's ready to, uh, call it a day, so, um, we just need to decide when we are going to recess too.
Okay. You have any suggestions, Mike, as far as a date that works best for you?
I am open the rest of this week and all of next week, so any of those days work. We traditionally meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, so any of those days are fine with me and the staff.
All right, let's start on the fifth.
Go ahead, Dave.
Let's start on the fifth. May fifth is... That's a Tuesday, right?
It is. That's a Tuesday, yeah. Okay. Is that okay with everyone? Well, somebody had requested six-thirty for tonight. Um, does six-thirty work best for everybody, or can we do six?
Six is fine for that day. I, I was unable to do it at six today. That's why I requested.
Oh, okay. Got you, got you. Got you, Roger.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Next Tuesday, everyone, is that okay? Six o'clock?
At six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Good.
All right. Okay, then we will... Yeah, could somebody ask a question? Sorry, I thought I heard someone.
Mayor, this is Travis. I'll make a motion. We, uh, recess until six on the fifth.
I have a motion and a second to recess until May the fifth at six o'clock.